All right, thank you. We have a small crowd, but a raucous crowd. I like that. We're good. All right. If we can please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Bright Cruz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kozinski.
Here.
Councilmember Albritton. Councilmember Hartman.
Here.
Councilmember Jablonski.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great, thank you. If you'll please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have special guests with us this evening.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I need to, I would like to make a motion that we excuse Councilman Albritton.
Please, please.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to excuse Councilmember Albritton. Is there any discussion on the item?
Hope he's having a good time.
Yeah, me too. All right, seeing none, if you please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kozinski?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
No, no, that was good.
Just wanted to get that in real fast.
Thank you. All right. Robin, you are up. Thank you for joining us this evening. Always good to see you, and you've got a new guest with you.
I do. I'm so happy to be here. I am excited to introduce my new legislative aide to the community. I wanted everyone to meet her. A graduate of FSU, just recently graduated, lives in the district, she's a Noel. Brianna Vales, Elia Habla, 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 habla español perfecto. Part of the personas in the comunidad se hablan español. Es necesito tiene una persona que habla perfecto porque mi español es terrible. But, so it's really important to have her. But I wanted you all to see a face, because I know I go to everything, but when I'm in Tallahassee and it's committee weeks, this will be me, and I look so young and friendly and beautiful. And I just want to thank this commission for all their work. I just spoke to your fire chief, and you're ordering your blue lights for the back of your fire trucks, which is the bill I passed. And I'm so excited, so we have to get a picture when the blue lights come on, because that's going to keep our first responders responders safe. And we did an okay job with flooding. I drove around. I did go to 163rd to look at it. I took pictures to bring to Tallahassee again next year. And I just want to just thank everybody for all that you do. Also, all the people watching. The window from isafloordahome.com is open. If you need hurricane windows or roof, you need to register now. You can get $10,000 towards home hardening, but there's going to be a list. So you want to get on that list right away, have the inspector come out, and put yourself in the queue so you can harden your home. So thank you all very much. That is it. Any questions?
Did you bring cards?
Uh, yes.
Why don't you come down the line, then?
Yes. All right. Thank you, everybody.
Great. Thank you, Robin. All right, and we have another very special guest with us this evening. Mayor Barbara Sharif is here. Barbara, thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
You've always been an awesome friend to the town of Southwest Ranches, and invite you to come up and say a few words.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. You know, it's always been a privilege to serve Southwest Ranches as the county commissioner and as the mayor, Broward. And one of the things that we worked so collaboratively with is making sure that we, as a community, solved our flooding issues. And while I live in Miramar right now in Country Club Ranches, and we've experienced a high level of flooding, if it wasn't for the efforts of the town of Southwest Ranches, we'd probably be a lot worse off. As a, and I am running for Florida State Senate District 35, and so I just wanted to come here tonight to, one, reaffirm my commitment to the town of Southwest Ranches; two, confirm my commitment to work at funding the South Florida Water Management District at 100%; and three, working with Representative Robin Bartelman and the other state senators to make sure that we improve our water infrastructure; and then, four, I've received several calls and inquiries about the incinerator and recycling in the future. And I just want to tell you that I think that, one, I'm vehemently opposed to an incinerator being placed in South Broward County. And, two, we are going to, and I will, at the state level, continue to support recycling, increasing recycling, because I know that that is something that is really important to the residents in Southwest Ranches. And I know in all of South County, we need to do more of that. And so I just want to let everybody know, if they're not here and they're listening, that I hear you, and I'm going to address that as a state senator. So thank you for having me tonight. I appreciate it.
Great. Thank you, Barbara.
Can I ask a question?
Sure. Want to have?
So, about a year ago, you came out to one of our HOA meetings, and you had just left the county commission, I believe. You kind of had the inside track on what was being planned down at, you know, at the county building. And at that time, you were saying two-plus incinerators were being thought through, and that was kind of the game plan. I don't know if through your wonderful sources, you've got any updates on that, or anything to add that the community would be interested in.
So what I can say is that, at that point in time, two years ago, we hadn't formed our committee, we hadn't formed a board to address the incinerator issue in Broward County. We were just in the, I would say, the infant stages of planning. And that had been the talk for some time, because we were probably the only place in Broward County, besides up in Pompano, that had acreage to build such a thing. I can tell you that the people of South County have come together and have really made it a point to make their voices heard, and to say they don't want that down here. And I know that Mayor Bright Cruz has been instrumental in working on that, making sure that they look elsewhere to put that incinerator. We still have the trash issue, and I think that the board is doing a really good job at bringing in experts to try to look at that and handle that problem. But I can say, for right now, you know, with all the cities that have signed on and have come out and said they don't want the incinerator in South County, I don't think that that's on the horizon at any point in time right now. And we'll keep attending the meetings and seeing what plans they come up with, but, you know, we still have to figure out a way to get rid of the trash that we're producing, and I'm hoping that we can come up with something that's better for the residents of South County and better for the environment.
Yeah, our community is very involved in zero waste. We're really trying to make it a circular system where we're not adding to it and we're not burning it to get rid of it as much recycling or reuse as possible.
And also, someone brought up in one of the meetings composting, and so I think that that's also one of the projects that they were talking about, was teaching residents how to compost if they have the areas to do that, and then making it a priority to have every single city recycling, because it's really important. You know, some cities stopped recycling many years ago, and that's something that we talked about during the meeting, was that we didn't stick together on the waste recycling goals. And if we come back together on that, I think we can make a pretty significant dent in our waste disposal issues, so.
We have two groups that meet here monthly. You're always welcome to join us. One is really an anti-incinerator effort to try to get all the communities in Broward County. It's a countywide initiative to stop this whole thing. We don't want incinerators anywhere. And then the other is, and you brought it up, composting. We have a group that is an advisory board to the council that meets monthly to advise us, come back to us with ideas, and composting seems to be one of the ones that they're favoring right now.
Yeah, I've heard that, especially from the people in Southwest Ranches that contact me. So I would say, yes, in Southwest Ranches, but in other, in other areas that are more densely populated, they are kind of trying to explore other options, too.
So Barbara, just one other thing along those same lines. There was a bill passed a couple of years ago, I think now, that defined incineration as a form of recycling, and then also actually promoted money to pay for that incineration. And I would hope that, and Robin, you're welcome to listen in on this as well, you know, yeah, those, I think those are both very bad, bad moves. And I would hope that, you know, we can start to build some effort to try and reverse that, if possible.
Absolutely, absolutely. I agree. I work 100% on that. And, you know, I think that our efforts in elected office have been closely aligned, and I will continue that at the state.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara, for all you do. Appreciate it.
Do we have a question? Outside.
Uh, yeah, if you...
Sure. Sure.
Mary?
Yes.
Come to the mic.
Okay. You are a doctor, correct?
Doctor of nursing practice, yes.
Okay. So, under the Nightingale.
Hey, hey, Bill. Please, state your name.
Okay, based on Jim Lasky, 5780 Southwest 188th Avenue. As a medical professional, would you be willing to make a statement that is not in the best interest of the health of anybody with a certain range of any incinerator to be built in Broward County? We need to get people motivated to get everybody to the place where you're now starting to get to. It would really help us a lot if we had a medical professional trained to understand all the problems with breathing, right? Okay, thank you very much.
Got it.
Great.
I think I made that statement, so I'm going to make it again. I am vehement, I did, actually. It's actually on my website. So I'm vehemently opposed to an incinerator being in, in South Broward County. We know that incinerator ashes and the dust and some of the chemicals that are used in incineration have created issues for people with asthma, COPD, and any other type of lung disease and cancers. And so, as a medical professional, obviously, that's at the forefront of my mind when I think about incineration. But also, what's, the second thing that's on the forefront of my mind is pollution, and that's groundwater supply. And that's something that we've been talking about for years. And so, you have to breathe, but you also have to drink clean water. And so I would say both of those are equally as important. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a few, starting with Noel Hollingsworth, John Steven Garotti, and Marion Allen.
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. Today and yesterday, we got a thousand-year flood come through town. For several years, we've had, well, quite a few years, we've had on the books, Corps of Engineer project out west on the north side of the C-11 canal out by US 27, down to 207th. For a drainage impoundment area for when we have such a flood, where they'll pump the water in from the C-11 directly into there, and start earlier than what they started yesterday pumping the water out into the Everglades, because that can only be done in a super emergency. It was supposed to start the project last year. I've asked several times of the administration to find out when this project is going to start, or why it's being delayed, and I haven't gotten any reply whatsoever. First time was in January, and the last time was a few weeks ago. I'd like for the council to add a little pressure to it, to our federal legislators, maybe, and get some answers as to why this project has not started, since all of the plans and everything and public comment has been completed for several years now. Thank you very much.
John Steven Garotti, Marion Allen. Just come up with your name.
Good evening. Oops, sorry. Good evening. John Garotti, 162nd Avenue. Got to say hi to my wife. Hi, Laudy. It's been a wet one last week. I mean, it's still raining out there, but what are you going to do? Our town dried up pretty well, though. I was pretty surprised. Drove around a lot of areas, seen a lot of progress. You know, a lot of these repairs that we see, you don't get to appreciate them until you see the lakefronts go away, but it's a good thing to see that, because Dykes was pretty closed up yesterday. Couple of things I wanted to bring up. Just did my Southwest, um, sorry, the zero-waste introduction to zero-waste class. Very interesting. I think it's something a lot, all you guys up there, maybe some of you guys have taken it, but it's very informative. It really opens your eyes to the existing problem. I mean, we don't do enough. We don't, we're not informed enough. It wasn't something that wasn't, you know, at the forefront of our minds when we wake up in the morning, but tell you what, it's the most important topic of the day, because if you don't have, like Dr. Sharif said, clean water, clean air, where are we going? I'm in the automotive world. We're probably one of the filthiest industries there is, but we've made a lot of changes. I'm also in the animal world, and, you know, they get affected as well. So anything we can do to improve our status with the environment is something that we have to do. You know, Southwest Ranches is a mixed area. It's got, it's got, you know, different incomes. You have multi-billionaires living here now, and you have your fellow ranchers that have one-acre lots, so it's pretty, it's pretty diverse. You know, a lot of different cultures, a lot of, lot of different environments that people might not be used to. You know, when I say environments, I mean neighborhoods that, you know, had drainage, and here, we don't really have the common stormwater drains, but that comes with a big price tag, so, you know, it was good to see that go away. Another thing that's been on the topics lately is agriculture. I know that we want to protect as much of that as absolute possible, because where else are we going to have the open spaces that we have, and the nurseries, and the, you know, the rights that we have in having that bigger lot? So I think as a town, if we're going to be agriculturally driven, I think we have to stop pursuing certain businesses that do that. You know, our nurseries in, in the Broward County Property Appraisers Office says, you know, we, we have to, we have to, you know, it's hard to put this in statements that, you know, make sense to everybody, but if we are protecting our rural lifestyle and our agricultural commitments to our town charter, we have to really focus on the message. It's not just say something and then do the total opposite. Our nurseries have to be protected, everything agricultural, even the lady that sells eggs on the corner, because that's, that's who we are. So that's pretty much what I got for now. Six seconds left. Three-point shot. Done deal.
Marion Allen.
Marion Allen, Sunshine Ranches, Mustang Trail. And I want to talk about our agricultural, because I want to use my three minutes for every meeting so we can get this important topic underway. And we already have the support of many of our members. Thank you so much. Goals of the Agricultural Department, number one, self-sustainability and resilience of our town. Agricultural Department has a, has to have a current email list of all equine and agricultural farms and nurseries, updated yearly. In the event of natural floods, catastrophes, hurricanes, the Ag Department will notify all farms by email of the emergency. All agricultural farms in Southwest Ranches will also be given the same list. These farms will provide a list of participating farms that can help in such an emergency, such as farms that can take in animals, farms that have heavy-duty equipment that can help in an emergency when FEMA is overwhelmed, farms that can share food when supply interruptions and scarcity abound. These are critical services that are needed in the escalating emergencies we are seeing around the world, where the federal emergency services cannot get to you for a long time. These services that our farms can provide may mean the difference between life and death in the future. During floods, many farms can take in animals, and also the Ag Department can set up an area in our public park to take on farm animals that would be underwater otherwise. Our farms are a huge resource for Southwest Ranches to help recovery and self-sustainability. The Ag Department will help our farms apply for FEMA grants to recover after emergencies. Many people do not know how to do this and in a timely fashion. The Ag Department will require from the Property Appraisers Office a yearly current record of all farms, equine stables, and nurseries. We need to know how many new applications are made yearly, and how many are denied, as well as how many renewals are denied. I spoke to the Farm Bureau the other day, and they said all the complaints in Broward regarding the Property Appraisers Office are coming from Southwest Ranches with problems with our farms. So we're going to get on this topic, and we're going to try to figure it out. The town of Southwest Ranches and its residents are very concerned with the loss of our farms. Our residents mandated 95% and more that we remain rural. Our motto is preserve, protect, and promote. It is important we keep records of current farms yearly from the Property Appraisers Office so that we can immediately address any changes in the rules, application process, that are not in accordance with the Florida State Right to Farm Act. The Ag Department will work in conjunction with the County Extension Agent to take master garden classes and make them available for our residents. A certified master gardener in our town can then assist individuals who want to create a small garden on a less than a quarter acre or a quarter acre. Did you know that the Property Appraisers Office has granted agricultural classification on a quarter acre properties? We can all do this. These first-time gardeners that want to create a food source for their family is an important step in creating self-sustainability for our residents. So anyway, three seconds left. I have more, but Russell will be giving you all a copy of our proposal for the Agricultural Department. I think it's pretty inclusive, and we can now run with it. Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you, Mary.
Thanks.
Mary Michelle, followed by Wafa Mason.
Mary Michelle, North Saxon Circle. I know several people in this room, if not most, chaired when Israel rescued the four hostages last Friday at the expense of 274 Palestinian lives and 800 Palestinians wounded, 800 wounded who will more than likely die from their wounds. After all, that is the intent. But you are so totally manipulated by the Israeli spin factory, and yet you're self-to-be-acknowledged ingrained racism and bigotry. You don't care. As I have said before, the next time you cry crocodile tears and wring your hands in incomprehension of how could just, how could people just stand and accept and participate in the Holocaust, I again say, look in the mirror and ask yourselves again. I have heard the members of this council say that they cry when they see a dead possum on the side of the road. But you do not cry for tens of thousands of childrens and babies crying out in pain, limbs blown off, skin burnt away by white phosphorus, no medicine, no supplies to ease the pain. I would really like to know the mental gymnastics you perform to justify the righteous declaration of never again and only apply it to certain people. And let's be honest, you hadn't have to be white and non-Muslim for it to count, right? The outburst of racial hatred that was exhibited at this town's last council quoted just about every Muslim trope and recklessly spread malicious propaganda fabricated by the Israeli government, Israeli propaganda which has been discredited by every reputable news agency, including the Israeli newspaper Harats. That hatred is palpable in this room. The mayor cautioned the speaker at one point because, oh, we mustn't say it out loud, but she'll wink, wink, talk to someone you in private later. Who? Which of you? All of you? Not a single one of you told her that you were not interested in listening to her racial and religious hatred, nor attempted to distance yourself from the evilness and violence of her speech. You as well have blood on your hands. Silence alone is complicity, but this town has gone so far as to declare that it's unequivocal support of Israel, which, for the third time, does say exactly that. Unequivocal support for genocide. Unequivocal support for land grab by slaughtering an entire population. These are not my words. These are the words from the people who run the very government you unequivocally support. No, I won't say I feel sorry for babies that weren't beheaded or burnt in ovens, because that's all a lie. What I will say is I'm sorry for the indiscriminate carpet bombings of civilian populations. Mass executions, mass graves found at seven hospitals with patients with IVs still in their arms and their hands tied behind their backs, actual beheading of children. Salvation as a weapon of war. Torture, targeted murder of healthcare workers, the press, the UN, the latest massacre that sank the US to an even lower low. A massacre enabled by the building of a pier that we all knew was not to supply humanitarian aid, but as in a cover to bring in more weapons and put American boots on the ground to participate in firsthand in the murders. The list goes on and on. For 78 years, displacement and murders, displacement and murders. Where is your apology? Where is your compassion? Where is your humanity? Where is even the accountability for the overt racism that was tolerated in the last meeting? I again ask this town to call for a ceasefire resolution and work towards peace rather than slaughter. Thank you.
Wafa, followed by Bebe Bali.
Good evening. My name is Wafa Mason. I live in 6621 Southwest 57th Street in Davie. Dear council, thank you for all that you do and for having the time to listen to your citizens' concern. I am an American Muslim woman, and I would like to address the very false remarks that this Marion woman made last week right here in this room, in front of all of you, against Muslims and Palestinians. She is being permitted to use hate speech to dehumanize our community as Muslims. If hate speech...
I will, we're not, we're not going to do personal attacks. Do you understand me?
This is not personal, you honor...
You just, I think you just, you just named the person, so it is personal attack.
No, okay. I'm sorry. I'm not going to aim her. I'm just going to talk about facts in general.
You're welcome to talk about facts. You are not welcome to do personal attacks.
Okay. All right. So if hate speech in general, not about this woman, was directed to any other religion, like Jews, for example, it will be wrong, right? And it will be anti-Semitic. While that hate speech directed at Muslims is Islamophobia and totally wrong, I feel she was wrongfully, I'm not talking about a person, this is a fact, that a lot of people have been dealing with the results and the harm that they got from these speeches and expressions. This kind of hateful expression puts our community's welfare in harm's way. Three young Muslim men were shot because of such hateful delivery. A young boy was killed, and his mom was stabbed by, by her landlord in Chicago because such humanization command of language. It is a lie that we are not allowed to show our hair, she claimed. Sorry, but here I am. I am the proof. I'm a Muslim woman, and I'm showing all of my hair. You see it? Nothing has ever happened to me. I've been living in a Muslim community. I traveled to many Muslim-centered countries, and nothing ever was happened to me, not even an assault or like a word to hurt my feelings. It is a choice. I'm showing it all. This is not a problem, and it never has been. Whether we cover or not, it is our choice. We will not be dictated by any other people. This is part of one's freedom of choice. It does not sound like she has any respect for other people or our Constitution. We Palestinians are not religious fanatics. Our struggle is for equal rights against apartheid system that discriminate against us in favor of one ethnicity. We are fighting a state that is based on ethnic supremacy. She claimed that she never heard us condemn Hamas.
Please, if you're going to, if you're going to continue to isolate a particular person, I'm going to ask you to sit down.
Okay, I'm not going to talk about her. We do not, we, nobody ever heard us, everybody's asking, like, do we condemn Hamas, right? But nobody had ever heard anybody condemning Israel for the genocide on Gaza. They have bombed everything in Gaza out of existence, including over 37,000 people injured.
Your time is up.
Okay. Ceasefire. We care about peace.
Followed by Jim Lasky.
Respected mayor and city council members. The last time I was here was actually...
Could you state your name and address, please?
Sorry. Beebe Bali, 2641 Roanway. The last time I was here was literally the first time I have ever spoken in front of any city. And I was honestly dumbfounded by the level of ignorance of facts and hateful rhetoric spewing from my neighbors in Southwest Ranches. Although I myself is not an Arab, there's a very beautiful Arab proverb that says, "The tongue is a ladle that dips what is in the heart." I'll be 50 in a few days. It would be an utter shame to reach 50 years old and still be hateful, still be ignorant, and inhumane. Respected mayor and fellow and city council members. When the meeting concludes today, you will all drive home in your comfortable car on our safe roadways. You'll reach home and be welcomed by your families, your children, perhaps. Have a lovely dinner, and then go rest peacefully. Now imagine if you were in Gaza. You wake up one day, and there's absolutely nobody that exists. Southwest Ranches consists of over 700, the last time I checked, 7,463-plus residents. Imagine not a single one exists. Imagine there's no spouse. Your children are buried on the rubble. Your children are buried on the rubble. There is no electricity, there is no food, there is no water. You can't call 911 because no ambulance will come. You can't go to Memorial, you can't go to Cleveland because it's in complete ruin. The 150 acres that's designated alone for Southwest Ranches for parks and recreation doesn't exist. It's completely obliterated. The multiple business, our beautiful flamingo gardens that you and I take our kids to, doesn't exist.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Lasky, followed by Harold--
I respectfully ask for a ceasefire.
And final speaker is Debbie Green.
Jim Lasky, 5780 Southwest 188th Avenue. As you know, I'm involved with this fight that I was just discussing with Dr. Cherie. We need some money. Our group has no money. We need to find some sources or identify some sources that are using all the recycled material that's leaving this town every day on US 27 or I-95. There's plenty of people within very short range of here that are consuming an awful lot of garbage, but we need to identify them. We need to go to places like Georgia Pacific and find out what their capacity is to take more garbage, present a solution that makes economic sense, because it doesn't pay, obviously, to spend $1.4 billion for something that's only going to last for 40 years, okay? It just doesn't make any sense. Yeah, I mean, you get a couple of years into it and the government's going to crack down even more than they are now. But they're getting ready to crack down on diesels for trains. Right now, what is it, Berkshire Hathaway wants to build a state of the art train station to relieve the load from the port in LA. They want to, in other words, they're getting robbed left and right in the other areas where these trains congregate to redistribute merchandise throughout the United States. But the EPA is cracking down on those emissions. So it's going to happen. It's going to happen right away. Technology is changing. This is a profitable business. Kimberly Carter just reported an increase in earnings because their raw materials costs dropped. What does that mean? They're recycling more and more material. If you look at, they're, go to their website, they list all the different products that they make and they list them as being made from recycled garbage, paper towels. It's just not very pleasant to make that an advertising model, all right? And then put it in public that it's made from garbage. But it's, the reality is, it's true. That pulp can be converted. The same with plastics and Exxon Oil. Exxon Oil is breaking down plastics now and at a lower carbon emission. It all makes sense, but the world doesn't really know this. A lot of this stuff is proprietary information that only people in the company have access to. And artificial intelligence is not going to make it any better because they're going to lock that up so their secrets don't get out. But we got to explore this stuff. We got to come up with some plausible rationale why this thing is so damn dumb. I don't know any other way to describe it when you look at the amount of money that we're going to waste burning something. And then, if we win, we get sick. Okay? Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, good evening. Harold Gubnitzky, council members, mayor. Thank you for all you're doing and the patience that you exhibit here with our fellow neighbors. First off, I have the privilege of being the chair of the advisory committee on zero waste. First, I'd like to thank you all for, many of you have participated and come into some of the meetings. If you can mark on your calendar August 6th, we're going to have some good information. And my commitment, our commitment is to bring some ideas, innovation. We've all talked about composting, that's one of the solutions, but there's a lot of other good innovation that will address the topics that we heard from the mayor, from Jim and others in terms of how do we go ahead and address the zero waste initiative and really keep our town or, and get, and help to fight this incinerator concept. So thank you and hopefully you'll be able to attend. And then on another topic, which I wasn't really going to address, you know, just to hear, not to get into anyone's personal business or the geopolitical issue, but you know, we wouldn't be having all this issue and hearing this on CNN if some of the terrorists and Hamas didn't exist and let the Palestinians live their life. It's a, it is a disaster that innocent people are being hurt and killed, but I think some people miss the root cause of the--
Quiet. No one interrupted you.
The, it's a root, the root cause of this is in fact Hamas, which is addressed by, in my opinion, and by, you know, other terrorist money and other kinds of things. And I think that's what we all have to remember is the root cause and not get caught up on the superficial things. And so, so that, that's what we have to remember and--
If you're not going to be quiet, I'm going to ask for you to leave. Do you understand, do you understand me? This is the last time I'm going to, I'm going to give you a warning.
So we appreciate, we--
Quiet, Mary Ann.
We appreciate everyone having a fair and a deeper understanding and it's not just what you see on TV and it's not what the Hamas authority tells you. It's really what's a deeper cause and, you know, October 7th was the cause of this and we have the terrorists underground that are really hurting the Palestinian people that deserve to be in peace, but they're being taken over by this terrorist group. So thank you and thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Final speaker. No, we have a final speaker is Debbie Green.
Debbie Green, 5201 Southwest 199th. I was just going to share some good news with all the rain and all of that kind of stuff. Our, our street was always dry, but we don't have a big puddle in our driveway. Our yard is, there's, it's not full of water. Part of that, I think, is it was so thirsty. But the canal seemed to be down and so it's, we've been wonderful. Unlike my Avantura, where I was just moving my office from. But I also just wanted to let everyone know that the next Broward Solid Waste Authority, the executive committee meeting, the next meeting is June 28th. It's at Government Center West. It's planned to go from 9:00 to 12:00. It's open to the public. There's two minute comment for public at the start of the meeting and this is planned to be their kickoff meeting for the master plan, the work that's begun by the master plan consultants that have just been hired. So, and this is the kickoff meeting. So I just think, I think that's one of those meetings that is just super important, that as many people that can be there and express their concerns and the direction they want to see this master plan for the next 40 years. So again, it's June 28th at Government Center West at 9:00 AM. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Richard? Yeah?
I got you.
Okay, yeah, come up and then please fill out a form.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, mayor, council members.
Just your name and the address.
Richard Ramcharatar, Southwest 166th. I just wanted to just give you a couple of brief comments here concerning zero waste education. Yesterday, there was an introduction to zero waste class that was given online. We had five people from Southwest Ranches sign up for this class. And that's a great thing because we need to continue with the education process on zero waste. The other thing that I wanted to mention briefly is that I've been invited to attend an international conference in Brazil. I will be traveling to Brazil in the next week, speaking on composting and other issues pertaining to the incineration issue that we have here in South Florida and landfills. So I'm looking forward to meeting a lot, a lot of new people on the international front who will be discussing their sustainability and zero waste initiatives around the world. And I'm looking forward to bringing all of that information back and sharing it with our council and our community and the executive committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. All right. Public comment is closed. Board reports, do we have any board reports this evening? Seeing none. We'll say, Harold, just a note for the future, I mean, you were fine what you did, but you're chairman of the board, of that board, so if you wanted to come up during board reports, you get a little bit longer time period to report. And just, I know it's, it's kind of a new responsibility, so, but appreciate for all you're doing and the entire board's doing. Thank you. Council member comments.
Okay, I'll go.
All right.
And I will be quick.
All right.
So we have, we have a really important game going on at 8:00 and we'd, a lot of people like, would like to see some of it, so I'll just go through this really quick. Our, just FYI for everybody, the farmer's market for this Saturday has been canceled due to inclement weather coming, so don't go. Nothing's going to be there except water.
Right.
So I just want to mention that. The mayor's chess challenge is Saturday, this Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00. That is still being held, correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Here at Town Hall, it starts at 10:00 AM. We have a sign on, we have, there is a sign at the Shell Station on Griffin Road that's showing hazmat information for prescription drug drop off and shredding and et cetera. Okay, that is for the town of Davie. That is not for the town of Southwest Ranches. You have to be a Davie resident to pursue that. Ours is on the 27th and it'll be located in the middle of I-75 and the bridge going over the top.
June, July, or August, which month, on the 27th?
Say again?
Which month?
July. July 27th. Did I forget the month? Sorry. Yes, July 27th.
I don't want to miss it.
So the one, the one at, at the Shell Station is not for our town. So I just want to, so people don't get confused with that. We have a photo contest going on right now with the Rural Arts Board for the new calendar. It's proud of our town. Photos got to be, have to be submitted by September. So whatever you feel is, makes you proud of our town, that's the picture to send in, send in. Mayor, you're going to talk about Super Tots?
Um, yeah, I mentioned it.
Okay, I'll leave that to you. I didn't want to, I didn't want to step on you.
That's all right. Go ahead.
I was prepared not to step on you.
All right, I will, I'll mention it. Thank you.
So I was deferring, deferring to you.
Perfect.
Okay. And all the residents should have received this envelope in the mail by now. It's from Waste Management. It contains a sticker that looks like this and you put that on top of your recycling can and it gives you all the do's and the don'ts. And if anybody didn't get any, there's several back there that you can take with you on the way home. They're free. And we have more in Town Hall if you want, anybody needs to come by if they have a second recycling container or they just didn't, got missed. So, and everybody, this is what it looks like. It peels off in the back, it sticks, it's weatherproof and it works. I have it on my container at home. And that's all I have, mayor.
Great. Thank you, Gary. All right. I would like to go next.
I'll go very quickly. I did want to thank Mary Ann Allen tonight on her idea for the ag department. Just to give you a little background, she showed up in a meeting close to two months ago now and had a whole bunch of great ideas in terms of how to continue to promote and also really, more importantly, some, support the ag community. And it isn't just the horsemen, it isn't just the nurseries, it's, it's anybody who's in the agricultural industry, whether it's for profit or as well for, for fun. I mean, we have a lot of, we used to call them hobby farms once upon a time, but a lot of people that have big investments in horses and some people just have goats for the fun of it. But the important thing is that she made an impression on us. Right now, we had met with Russell back about two, three weeks ago to further explore her ideas and she said, I heard a bunch more tonight. You got to write these down and send them to us.
If you want them all sent.
Please, please. Because, you know, our next step, we just can't wave a magic wand and all of a sudden we have an ag department. We have to plan it out. We have to figure out how we're going to staff it and how to move this forward. And right now, we're in budget planning season. We're, we're looking at what makes sense for next year based on the forecasted taxes coming in and, you know, what, what we could do to obviously not increase our millage rates and, and work through the whole thing. And I was very pleasantly, surprised is probably the wrong word, but I was very happy that when I went through my budget session last week with Russell and our town finance director, Amel, that they are able to work through this. Can't make any promises yet because this is the beginning of the budget process. I need four other people up here to agree that this is such a great idea, which is why I'm talking about it. But it seems like it's something that might be doable unless something gigantic comes along unplanned that would consume the same finance. But it's a great idea and it's, you know, we've been talking about things like this for years. We've had a lot of, you know, negative pressure about agriculture in town, changing our laws that would have damaged the ag industry. The people on this council have stopped that at every turn. I mean, we do not do anything to, to bother or to impact the ag folks in town. We do everything we can to support. So I wanted to thank you because your efforts are moving forward and I'm sure you'll be here to support it through the budget season. Thank you.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Bob, for those comments.
All right. Thanks, Bob. Put me on board for the ag department, all right? Put me on for it. Hey, folks, thanks for coming out. Go Cats. You know, hope they pull that off tonight. We're up 2-0. All right, with the recent rain, I know everybody's properties are flooded. One good bit of news, I have not heard any water getting into one residence in the town. That's really good news. That's the primary goal. Make sure no homes are flooded. Now, you're going to have water on your properties and that's part of the process, part of the nature process, because Southwest Ranches is the biggest aquifer recharge municipality in Broward County. And the way we recharge is the water percolates to the aquifer. It doesn't just go into C11 and end up in the aquifer. It doesn't go that way. It goes through our soil to the aquifer. So it's, it's a process and we just have to accept nature. All right, let's see. I'm going to go with my traffic enforcement report, law and order report for the month of May. District 1, 12 citations were issued. Of those 12 citations, four were speeding, all on exterior roads. District 2, three citations. That's, that's great. I wish my district was like that. Three, three citations, one of speeding, also on Griffin Road. District 3, there were 44 citations issued, 25 speeding, nine of those speeding are interior roads. That's, that's a concern. That's a concern. District 4, and of course, I always say the most for last, 87 citations are issued, 69 of those are speeding. Now, of those 69 speeding tickets that were issued in District 4, 21 were interior roads. And of those 21, all 20, all but one was on Sterling Road. And Sterling Road's getting a lot of speeding, so I'm glad Davie Police is cracking down on that. It's, it's important that we slow, keep our little animals that are running in the streets, the ducks, I've seen ducks run over and flamingos. I've been told somebody ran over flamingos on Mustang not too long ago. So anyway, slow down, folks. And last, I want to thank your mayor for your leadership, fighting the incinerator. Thank Gary for your input on that. Thank Bob for your input on it. Jim, miss you, but thank you for your input on it. All of us are against this incinerator. I want to thank our leaders in the community. Jim, thank you. Richard, Debbie, Harold, thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm going to, that dovetails into part of my article that I submitted for the next rancher. We're talking about the Zero Waste Advisory Board meeting coming up August 6th. During that meeting, the members will discuss a community planning checklist and a service analysis spreadsheet. This is the beginning of the effort to bring zero waste to the town of Southwest Ranches. And this is going to happen in this room on August 6th. Really applaud you effort, you guys for this effort. It's really, really phenomenal, this leadership you're taking. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, David. Appreciate those comments. All right, just a few things, a lot of, some of the things that I was going to touch on have already been brought up, which is awesome. Few things, I just want to follow up on what Debbie had said earlier, that we do, a week from Friday, we have the meeting coming up with SWA Group. from Friday, we have the meeting coming up with SWA Group, and it's a critical meeting. If you, is any way you can be there, Broward County Government Center, which is at Broward and University, at 9 a.m. We would be thrilled to have you out there and show your support. Things are really, you know, from, we're moving from ideas to action, and so now is the time to really get a strong voice out there. We've made a lot of progress, I think we're in a very good place. You heard it from Mayor Sharif earlier this evening, that people's thoughts and, and ideas are changing, and that's where we want to go, and that's what we've done, and it's, and it's been great to see that progress. But we can't let up, we gotta keep pushing for this, and as David said, just thrilled with, I could not be more proud of the folks in Southwest Ranches that have really invested in this, that have really dug in, that have really made a difference, and gone so far beyond what, you know, a lot of folks are just kinda nod, nod in their heads. But, you know, we as a community have really dug into this, and a lot of people spend a lot of time, we really appreciate it. It's making a big difference. We did have the kickoff for the, the Tot Program in the ranches this last Saturday. We have several folks that were signed up. The sign up on Saturday was not as, as busy as I would have liked to have seen it, but it's gonna take a while to get the word out there. And so I would just encourage folks to, to, you know, to speak about it. If you know a family next to you that has young kids, this is this particular program, it's for kids from one and a half years up to five. We'll have a program for older kids starting in the fall. But talk to your, to your neighbors about that. I think it's an awesome way to get the next generation of ranchers involved, so looking forward to that. I wanted to, let's see, one other meeting that's coming up that if we can make it to, I wanted to bring it to our attention, on June 18th, so that's Tuesday of next week, Broward County is having a meeting, and the, one of the items on the agenda, item 74, is, speaks about increasing the height of the landfills, right? And it's not only just the landfill in Pompano, it's the landfill here in our area as well. So this is another, you know, why they're doing this. Broward County is one entity, the Solid Waste Authority is a different entity, and, and even though we have a representative from Broward County on the solid waste, it's disappointing to see them moving ahead with things that may not be aligned with the master plan that we're coming up with. And so I would encourage folks to be out there, I plan on being out there and speaking at that, and, and asking them to step, set this aside and, and put a little trust in the, the SWA Working Group, and, and, and let us come up with a plan. So we'll see how that goes, but I would encourage folks to come out to that if you can possibly make it, it is during the day, so I know it's tough for a lot of folks, but if you can be out there, that would be great. And then the last thing I wanted to bring up was, as, as several folks have brought up, obviously we've gotten a tremendous amount of rainfall in the last few days. I've been, been very happy to see really how quickly things are starting to dry out, even though it's still raining, we still had rain today. But I just, judging from Lake Bright Cruz in my backyard, it went down significantly in the first 24 hours, which normally that does not happen. Normally what happens in the first 24 hours, it actually rises even higher. And so I was super encouraged about that, and, and, and I would, I'd like to, Russell, with your permission, I'd like to call Rod up to, he's prepared a couple slides for us. And, and also, while he's coming up, I just want to say a few words that Rod, I know I've been in some of the meetings where we make changes, and during the construction phases, it's, it's not easy on anybody, it's not easy on you, it's not easy on our residents and things like that, but you've done a stellar job of sticking to the plan, addressing all these issues as they come up, and there's wide, a wide variety of them. And through an event like this, we're truly seeing a difference based on the work that you and your staff has done. And staff being not only folks helping the projects, but to get the funding in place and to do all those things. So I just really commend you, your staff, everyone who's working on these things. And I appreciate the residents and their patience as we go through these projects. There's a ton of work to be done, a lot of it's been done, but, but we've made a lot of progress. So Rod, if you can give us kind of an update on the last 48 hours and, and kind of what was done and where we're at, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely happy to do so, Mayor and Council, good evening. And I, I honestly, Mayor, I don't know what you've heard, but every time we do a project, it's always, everybody's happy, so.
I guess I go to different meetings.
So I'll kill some time, and I can honestly say, at least the lots and the yards are a lot greener today than they were about two weeks ago. So obviously I do want, when the, when the presentation comes up, I just wanted to talk about flood resiliency a little bit. And like you mentioned, Mayor, with the rain event and the storm that we've gotten, it just illustrated, it afforded us the ability to illustrate how important, how important infrastructure is to construct. So we do have a lot of pictures that, time series pictures that shows how the storm, actually, how, how the water receded when you have infrastructure and when you don't. So it's gonna be a good illustration for people to see.
Rod, according to the rain gauge out at the S-9 pumping station, 21 inches of rain as of about noon today.
That's a lot, and that's, that's starting to near what Edda was doing.
Yeah.
So I, I did have some brief conversations with South Broward Drainage District staff over there, and I know yesterday, they were talking about from midnight to roughly 5:00 in the afternoon, they were talking about six or seven inches, but the, the majority of that, about four hours, came in from like 2 to 4. And that, that intensity and that peak at that time is what caused that flooding issue.
Yeah.
So this is a, a picture that was taken, this is, we chose Southwest 63rd because obviously we're doing a project there, and it was, is a good location to show the improvement and how it worked. And this was taken approximately at 9 a.m. on, on the date of 6/12. Now, at 5:00 in the afternoon, the same intersection, this is what it looked like. This is after the two cells that came in, and now you're talking about a good four inches and change in about a two hour period. This is what it looked like on the next day at 8:00 in the morning.
Wow, it's fantastic.
A different site, so this is the, again, the same project, but a different street, and this is where we have not installed infrastructure yet. So this was taken on 6/12 about 5:00 p.m. You can see obviously that the, the water's across the road, and it's connecting hydraulically both, both properties there. And this is the next day at 8:00 a.m. And I wanted to show another picture, this is, that was the west side before, now this is the east side of Southwest 186 Way. And I wanted to show this picture also because if you see the bullet points there, Mayor, Southwest 63rd Street, the, the project is not complete yet, so the infrastructure on this street has not been installed, and you can see the difference here, all that standing water's just got nowhere to go. And I just wanted to leave you guys, the, the weather has, or the, the rain has died down some, but they're still high risk right now, so this is from the National Weather Service. I know that graphic is a little bit tough to, to really understand where we are. The I-75 corridor is kind of on that northern end of that, of that magenta area there. So we're still in an advisory, there's still heavy rainfall that is forecasted for today. It's ranging from four to eight inches with the higher amounts of 10-plus inches in the realm of possibility. And once it rains and the, the soil's saturated, it's a lot easier for flash floods to come in, so I just urge everybody to still be careful because we're still not out of it yet. And with that, I'd love to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Great, thank you, Rod. Any, any questions for Rod?
Great job.
I think we're good.
Great job.
Thank you, Rod, appreciate it.
And I think there was some questions, sorry, Mayor, about pumping.
Yeah, yes, please, yeah, that was a.
Yes, so I know sometimes that goes out there, we, we get calls all the time in the community about whether or not South Broward is pumping or not, or, or South Florida Water Management District is pumping or not. In this particular case, they were trying to thread the needle as far, because we were in such an extensive drought for such a long period of time, they were trying to thread the needle and not pump too early, so initially the pumps were not fully on. They had some pumps on, but they weren't going and pumping full board to their capacity. So I think that's why, you know, we got some of that feedback and some of that, canal stages were going up, because South Florida and South Broward weren't fully pumping at capacity in the beginning. Obviously, when those cells came in and that intensity increased, then they started pumping at, at maximum.
Now, did they ever turn on the pumps to come out of the canal and go into the Everglades, do you know?
I don't know that. I can find out, and I'll have that information for you guys.
Okay, thank you. All right. Appreciate that. All right, next item on our agenda, let's see, legal comments. No, okay. Any administrative comments?
Yes, Mayor, I'll make it brief because I know everybody wants to go home and, get home before the rain. Just wanted to touch on a few things. We have had several resident complaints related to some of the undergrounding projects from FPNL, as well as Comcast, myself and Public Works Director Rod Lay, who was just up here, drove around and took a look at some of the sites around town, and we did see some, you know, obvious deficiencies in the restoration work that was performed. We are working with FPNL and representatives from Comcast to get them to come out to HOA meetings, and also I'm trying to work to get them to come out to a future council meeting to address the deficiencies that we've outlined and what they plan to do about it, so.
Good.
So that's one, just wanna let you know, we're working on that. I also wanted to mention that we received word today that Governor DeSantis vetoed almost a billion dollars from the state budget, so unfortunately our $465,000 grant award for the Southwest 163rd Avenue Drainage Project was stricken from the budget. We're currently working to get our consultant to complete our vulnerability assessment, which we hope to have by the spring of 2025. Once we have that in place, we believe that that will help strengthen our future grant submissions, and hopefully we'll have, you know, future fundings approved. Also wanted to mention two other things. One is something that I'll need the town council's support on. We currently have two fire wells that need to be replaced in the town, that we, you know, looked at them, had them reviewed, and we've determined that they need to be replaced. We have been working very vigorously to try to get quotes as part of our procurement policy, to get the, to get the quotes necessary as part of our procurement process, and unfortunately, we've only gotten two quotes for that. I consider this to be an emergency purchase, and so what I'd like to do is to get the town council's support to allow us to follow our emergency purchase requirements in the procurement code, and allow us to proceed with just those two. In addition to that, what I'd like to do is also have town council's support to, we had budgeted $20,000 for this fiscal year to fund the replacement, we have two that need replacement. So what I'm going to ask to do is to have the town council authorize me to take $19,000 out of our unassigned fund balance to pay for the additional monies that we need. So basically, we have a quote for $39,000 to replace the two fire wells, we budgeted 20, so we're fine there, but we need an additional $19,000, so I'm looking for council support. Once I issue the purchase orders, we would come back with a formal resolution to adopt it anyway, and we would have everything, all the documentation and everything else, but I want to be able to issue this purchase order so that we can streamline it and facilitate the repairs to be done as quickly as possible.
Okay, so I, I hear two motions. One is to accept less than three vendors, and the other one is to allocate an extra $19,000 for this budget item.
Right.
Does anybody want to make a motion on that?
Can we combine them?
I think so. Keith, can we combine those into a single motion?
Yeah, but actually, the, the motion would be to enact the emergency procurement procedures rather than just the waiver.
And that covers both of those?
Correct, and to allow the.
And allow the, okay, so the emergency procedures.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we enact emergency procedures and the additional funds requested.
Great, good.
I'll second.
Have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion on the item? Any public discussion on the item? Seeing, please call the roll.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kozinski?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Council. And then the last thing I just had was, just wanted to announce that we still, in spite of the rain, we still are planning to have our open chest play this Saturday, so that's still scheduled this Saturday from 10 to 2 here at Town Hall.
Awesome, great.
Hey, Russell, I got a question.
Yes.
When you had mentioned at the beginning about FPNL and Comcast, FPNL was really fast about doing it, Comcast is less fast, getting the conduits buried under the ground, because a lot of places are sticking up, and some of these places are equestrian trails. So I would, if we can put some kind of pressure on Comcast to get their project done, because either that or put them underground, so there is no chance of any of our animals getting injured going by.
Yeah, we certainly will be making the request, obviously, we, you know, we have, although they have to have a, a permit from the town, we have very little say as quickly, as far as how quickly they will do these projects, but certainly the coordination and, and burying the lines, or at least getting rid of the poles, so that, you know, we, and the restoration issues, which is the biggest issue, so.
Right.
We're certainly gonna work with them on that.
Yeah, David, that's really why we want them here face to face, because we've been trying to expedite it via email and such, and it has not been successful.
Thank you.
So the thought is, let's get them face to face and see if we can get a commitment on the record right here.
We'll get five of them, let's ask you questions.
Exactly, exactly.
I've got a question for Russell as well. Russell, so I was coming, going somewhere early last week, I think it was coming here for the budget meeting, and I happened to notice that they were digging alongside of all the FPNL poles on my street. And I wasn't sure what they were doing, it didn't make any sense, I thought maybe they were pulling some copper, well, pulling wires so that we would maybe someday have copper or fiber out my way, and I pulled over and asked the guys, what are you guys working on? It seems this is a whole new project and a whole new concept. The poles on my street are on a bit of a tilt from one of the hurricanes, and the, the poles are also 40 years plus old. They are straightening these poles, and they're putting supports on both sides. Then they spray paint them brown and try to make them blend in. I don't know if you're aware of this, maybe it's only on my street, but I don't know if it's something you want to look into, because again, surprise!
No, I appreciate that, I was not aware of that, but that's part of the discussions that we need to have with them, for sure.
Yeah. You know, the sorry part is, next year, they're undergrounding us. Why are they spending this money? But anyway.
Yeah, there seems to be a lack of coordination, and that's obviously something we want to talk to them about.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Bob. There does seem to be, you bring up a great point, there does seem to be a lot of individual projects going on in town, both from FPNL and the cable companies, and it appears that one hand doesn't know what the other hand's doing. It's what it appears.
Yeah.
So once again, another good reason to get them in front of us and see if we can get some answers. All right, very good. End of administrative comments, Russell? Yeah, perfect. Okay, item number 10, please.
Yes, sir. An ordinance, item number 10 is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, submitting to referendum amendments to the town's charter, proposing the following amendments to be considered on the November 5th, 2024 general election ballot. To amend Article 1, Corporate Existence, Section 1.01, to clarify that the town also seeks to promote the agricultural and equestrian character of the town, and to add this language to Article 6, Elections, Section 6.01-H, oath. To amend Article 5, Quasi Judicial, to add Section 5.01-B, entitled proactive code enforcement. To amend Article 6, Elections, Section 6.01-G, to clarify that the term of office shall not commence until the election results have been certified. To amend Article 7, Charter Amendment, Section 7.02-C, to clarify that charter amendments require at least 60% approval from the voters. Excuse me. To amend Article 9, Transition, to rename Article 9, Assessments and Taxation, and to remove all of the outdated corporate formation language contained in Sections 9.02 through 9.07. Directing the town clerk to provide for a notice of advertisement of the referendum election to be published in accordance with the State of Florida Election Code. Submitting the referendum to the qualified voters of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, for the 2024 general election, providing that such referendum, if adopted, shall become effective as provided by law, providing for codification, providing for separability, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date.
Do you want to approve?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any comments on this item?
Lot of hard work has gone into all of these.
Yeah, couple of years' worth of work, yeah, by a good committee and.
Yeah, good committee work.
Yeah, this is great. I actually do have a question on one of these, reading it over, the 60%. So if I was a resident and just reading this, my assumption would be that this my assumption would be that this, what this charter amendment does is change it from 50% to 60%. And that's not what it does. And it's not what it says. And I'm not, I'm not saying it says that. I'm saying that that would be my assumption. And, and so even though it says to clarify, but, so my, my question is this. If it fails, I don't expect it to fail. But if it fails, where does that leave us? Because now, in that situation, the, the voter specifically voted down to have the 60, at least 60% or higher, which would then seem to indicate to me that we would be at exactly 60%, which is what we're trying to avoid. Seems like we could be creating a box here for ourselves.
You would be okay. The, the language as it currently reads in the charter, while inartful, anyone would read it or a judge would interpret it to mean at least.
Today, they would. But after, if, if it was voted down.
Totally fine. If this amendment is voted down, what's in the charter stays. It's unadmissible.
I know, I get that.
So it would be read that it would, it would be read the same way, without a doubt.
Even though the voter's turned down?
Correct.
At least 60%.
Well, that's a big if.
I don't expect them to. I certainly support this, I had a chart. Don't misunderstand, I'm not saying, I just, I'm reading it over. I got, I became concerned if the unlikely happens. And this is voted down, and voters actually turned down at least 60%. And it says in our charter, 60%.
I, I could, I have a couple of more words.
So I wanted, I was wondering if we can improve the wording to make it so that people realize it's not going from 50 to 60. It's just, just doing a clerical adjustment.
As you know, there's 75 words is the cap.
Yes.
I can definitely add a couple of words here that basically says currently, it requires 60%.
Exactly, 60%.
Exactly, 60%.
I would prefer that.
The town wishes to clarify the language, you say at least 60%.
If we could do that, I, I feel more comfortable. I just don't want to get into that.
It's a good idea.
I don't think we would end up there, but I want to make sure we don't end up in that box.
Not a problem.
That's a good idea.
Smart, okay.
All right, any other comments on this? Any public comments on these items? Seeing none, if we can, please call the roll.
Public comment?
What? Oh, as amended, thank you.
As amended.
Public comment?
I did public comment.
Oh, all right, all right. I didn't know that, sorry.
Yes, so, so do we, let me just, no, that's a good point. So the, the maker and the second, are you okay with the?
Yes.
I was the second.
Yeah. All right, awesome. Okay, please call the roll.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kozinski?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Very good. Item number 11, please.
Item number 11 is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the capital improvements element and adopting the five-year schedule of capital improvements for fiscal years 2024 through 2028 pursuant to Chapter 163 Florida statutes, providing for transmittal to the state land planning agency, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date. This item was approved on first reading, May 23rd, 2024.
Great, thank you.
Mayor, we're going to be requesting tabling on this item. It had to appear because we have an advertisement issue, but it's been dispatched to the state planning agency, and we can't act on it tonight anyway, so.
Okay.
How long do you want it tabled for?
We, right now, we have to wait for the state to respond to the amendment. So just table it, and we'll have to readvertise it anyway.
Don't we need to do it at a time certain?
No, because we'll have to readvertise it regardless. So if you just table, when you table to a time certain, it's to avoid a readvertisement requirement. But because we don't know what that time certain will be, I would just table it, and we'll readvertise it.
Okay.
Motion to table it.
Second.
Any comment on the item? None. If we can, please call the roll.
For the tabling. Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kozinski?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Item number 12.
Item number 12 is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a purchase order with the Metric Engineering Incorporated in the amounts of $45,509.87 for environmental permitting services for the Southwest Meadows Sanctuary Park Wetlands and Canal Project, authorizing the town administrator to execute the purchase order and providing an effective date.
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on this item. Any comments on this item?
I have a question. The money that the, the governor vetoed doesn't impact this project, right? Okay, thank you.
Any public comment on the item? Seeing none, public comment closed. If we can, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.[1606.42]